Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, March 20, 2024. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website, and for guest speakers, please do not turn your microphones off. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger, Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Beltsour, Kinshasa. Anybody know where that is? Democratic Republic of Congo is the capital city. Global Intelligence Society Presidential Candidate 2024. Vote by voter verification for whom. And uncensored freedom of speech and public comment are among my commitments. A concern of council is love. We love you all citizens, right, Ms. Strasburger? Proclamation on Tuesday, 19 March 2024, she offered, she sponsored, Ms. Strasburger. We Love You Foundation. WLU, really? A WLU male and female in the council room on the non-councilor side, Row One, far left, stood throughout the proclamation so that individuals in Rows Two and Three on that side could not see the presider area, but we could see their backsides. Two big Warwickian badasses. So much love? I don't think so. I think this is unloved behavior. You call this classy. Not classy, it is the opposite of that. Number two, post proc, the WLUers left. This is love for the people who are doing public comment or wanting to do public comment, and they knew that there were people here who are Indian Americans. More than 10 Indian Americans, public commenters, felt their love. Isn't that right, Mr. Wilson, who was behind me while I'm doing public comment? This is exactly the kind of uncivil behavior that we have come to expect from but really find repulsive in this council. Love? This is love? It is love fraud. It's anti-love. This is middle school behavior. No, it is playpen behavior. And there was this nervous WLU boy with glasses bouncing around the room, taking pictures. Why is it that he was able to go behind his boundary? Is there some kind of law, some kind of rule that prevents us, officer? Who gave him permission to do that? The offices of council and mayor have, as far as I know, on the fifth floor out there, there are flags for the so-called sister cities with Pittsburgh. I'm asking you, councilors, why is there no African flag? There are flags of countries from cities in Europe, in Asia, and in the Americas, but there are none from Africa. I view this as anti-black racism. Ouagadougou, that's the capital of Burkina Faso.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is David Brennigan.
My name is Dave Brennigan. Speaking today is one of the co-leaders of the Pittsburgh Housing Justice Table. The Housing Justice Table is a coalition of over 100 organizations and individuals that's anchored at Pittsburgh United, and we believe that housing is a human right and everyone should have access to the housing they need, and our mission is to advocate for political policies and actions that support that goal. I wanted to offer just a couple points in relation to the downtown LERTA ordinance. Our table hasn't met since this ordinance was introduced, but I wanted to share just a couple of points that we've made elsewhere. First of all, I think we all want to see more housing downtown. The Golden Triangle is the confluence of our region, and as we create the residential downtown, we must ensure that it reflects the diversity of our region and is anchored in our collective vision of creating a Pittsburgh for all. To that end, we appreciate efforts to ensure that housing conversions downtown include affordability. At the Housing Justice Table, we have always advocated for prioritizing housing policy and public funding to the populations that are most impacted by the affordable housing crisis in Pittsburgh, which is low-income households and disproportionately black and brown residents. The proposed downtown LERTA legislation defines affordability at 80% of area median income, but the recent Pittsburgh Housing Needs Assessment showed that the market cumulatively provides 12,000 more units at this income range compared to demand, whereas there's a shortage of 3,000 housing units below 50% area median income. So we'd advocate for setting income targets for affordability that follow the data about where the need is at 50% area median income and below, as has already been established in a lot of other city policies. We really shouldn't put the needle on that. Another way to ensure deep affordability while not adding more gaps to these pro formas would be to layer vouchers to these projects. The housing authority's payment standards are highest downtown, so that's a simple way to reach extremely low-income households without adding extra costs to projects that are already struggling to move forward. So overall, we'd encourage council to strengthen how affordability is defined in this legislation. Another point I'd like to make is that LERTA is just one tool. I think everyone knows that. A big part of our vision at the table is developing the capacity of the social housing sector, and our city leaders should look to other jurisdictions that are developing their public capacity right now to spur mixed-income housing development, and there are gaps left by the market in traditional lending, as is the case in downtown right now. In Montgomery County, Maryland, for example, they passed a $100 million bond for a housing production fund for the public housing authority to lend construction financing to new housing projects that may have gaps in their capital stack. Funds are used to spur these developments, but at the end of construction, the public housing authority retains majority ownership in the project, which allows them to push for higher percentages of affordable units or deeper affordability and recycle the public funds into more projects. With public ownership, we can ensure that our public dollars going into new housing development supports the public good rather than profits to private owners, and with limited resources, we can get more bang for our public buck while still supporting housing production in down cycles. Places like Boston, Seattle, and Atlanta are also modeling this, and Pittsburgh has the opportunity to be a leader and join this emerging movement.
And our next registered speaker is Alex Wallach Hansen.
Everyone, Alex Wallach Hansen, 26038th Street, Executive Director of Pittsburgh and Pennsylvania United. Great to be with you all here today. Similar to Dave, here to comment on the downtown LERTA bill. You know, we agree with council, this is a priority facing the city, that we need to stop the bleeding of the downtown tax assessments. We believe that as part of that, in order to stabilize revenue, we can't just be meeting the needs of the downtown developers, we also have to be meeting the needs of working people across the city. We believe that that is, to Dave's point, about making sure that we're setting affordability targets at 50% AMI, which is where we're setting them across, you know, city URA properties and policies, and that's where the real need is, right? 80% AMI, we're at market parity across the city. So if we're going to invest city resources, we should be investing them at the place where they actually benefit people. And the second piece is, we know this is a crisis today, and we also, we've all seen since COVID, the market shifts again and again, and we don't know where we're going to be in five or 10 years, so we would encourage council to think about keeping the LERTA timeline as short as possible. So those are our two pieces on the LERTA. And just while we're having this conversation, we know that there's this bigger structural issue here facing the city's revenue, which is that our property tax system is leaving out the largest and fastest-growing industries in our city: nonprofit hospitals, nonprofit universities. They don't contribute anything to our city budget in terms of property taxes. So if we're going to have this conversation at council around the property taxes downtown, we also need to be having this conversation about the broader pie and how do we grow the revenue pie here in the city. So we look forward to partnering with you all, partnering with the mayor's office, and we look forward to actually growing the pie of revenue for the city. So thanks, everyone. Appreciate you.
Thank you. There being no further registered speakers, we will now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium?
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street up at top of Befford Avenue. You know, as I said earlier, that I'm on Social Security, then also I was a state employee, so I get a small pension. I get $20 worth of food stamps a month. I go to the food banks. When I told you that I heard Marty Griffin, when they said anybody had cars, you could go, and he was saying, "Oh, come on, there's food banks all over the city." But in our building, September, we got no food bank, October, no food bank, and when it came for Thanksgiving, you know how they give out turkeys? Well, we got a big block of fish. And I'm saying this because I want you to understand, when they talk about the food stamps and they talk about food banks, a lot of you guys don't have that much respect for the people and think that we're, we shouldn't be deserving of it. I worked as a caseworker, and I've seen some families that really truly need it. I've seen hungry families. I have really been concerned about up at Katy River, where we had a bad actor, who you, Mr. Coghill, you saw, and you did not go and tell the mayor, because the mayor came up and gave a proclamation and a plaque to a politician's brother who just moved into the city and just moved in our building. He's cleaning up in front of August Wilson. Okay, so when I tried to talk to the mayor, I said, "Mayor, there's something that you did I don't understand. I would like to speak to you before I go before City Council." And I was saying about, "You got him cleaning up in front of August Wilson?" And he said, "Do you got something wrong with that?" Yes, I do, because if you go right in front of our building, there's trash right down the street, but he cleaning up there. I want you to understand that I told the mayor, "Well, much is given to you, much is expected." When I was talking to him and you had the politician, the woman that thinks she wants to be the manager, push him away, and he's smiling, and they're both smiling, and I say, "Mayor, I was talking to you." Oh, her agenda. I said, "Hey, if I'm talking to you," the least thing that he could have done is say, "Excuse me, Ms. Brown," even if he didn't talk to me the rest of the day, but to walk away smiling, and then when I talked to him in the hallway out here, got nervous, I said, "Come on, Ms. Brown, we from the hood." Yeah, I'm from the hood, and my son died in the hood when he was a state representative out there in Wilkinsburg. Yeah, I know about the hood. And forget the hood, if we got a, you know what, how much did he get, $100,000 a year? How much this ghetto from the ghetto? He's worse than me. Any time that he can't take and speak about us. Oh, there's a fundraiser for SEW, 90.5, they're having a fundraiser. Please, because they stand with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Are there any further speakers? Seeing no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. And that takes us to the Finance and Law Committee that I chair. So I want to acknowledge that the streaming of this meeting, we understand that there are some issues with the audio. Our Innovation and Performance Department and our Cable Bureau is working on it, and want to acknowledge that Councilwoman Gross is indeed on, though she couldn't hear my prompt, to announce herself today.
Bill 89, Resolution Amending Resolution 909 of 2023 entitled, "Resolution Authorizing a Fee Schedule for 2024 Pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code to Reduce the Cost of Employee Parking."
Do I have a motion?
Motion to hold one week.
I have a motion to hold one week. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor of a one-week hold, please say aye.
Aye.
We will hold Bill 89 for one week. And new papers, please.
Bill 241, Resolution Amending Resolution 546 of 2023, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Pittsburgh Futures for Professional Services relating to leadership development training by increasing the authorized spend by $90,000 for a new total not to exceed costs of $207,336.
Motion to approve discussion.
Motion to approve with discussion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, discussion, Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, I'm just not familiar with the program. Or maybe I am, I just need to be reminded. Do you know, I have OMB come to the table?
Yep.
Morning, High School Financial Officer. So this is a continuation of an administrative initiative that started when Merrick Gani came into office. We had funds originally via grants for work with Pittsburgh Futures. It's working with Jeff Webster, and we've worked through several different cohorts of management and leadership training. First, with the executive team. Last year, we moved into directors and some assistant directors, and this is going to continue that work for a third year, and what we are doing is really working to help meet the mayor's vision of solving to root, figuring out how we can improve our processes and get us, you know, doing better things for residents.
I remember what this is. So this is 100% grant funded?
It is no longer grant-funded. It's moved for the past two years in OMB's budget.
Oh, okay. And this is an additional $90,000?
Correct.
And this is to support our directors?
Our directors, and some of those directors are also now starting to carry the work and the teachings into their departments. I know that Human Resources has had their group meetings, DPW has had a lot of internal training sessions, so it's moving more and more throughout the administration at this point.
Hmm, okay.
Councilwoman Warwick.
Could you give any examples of things that have improved over the past couple of years?
Sure. So one of the biggest things that all of our departments have been working towards is related to the safety of our employees and what we have found that, you know, in solving to root, getting to the point of asking why? What is the actual problem? What we have been able to do is really decrease a lot of our workers' comp rates, especially within public works, and what that turns into is, you know, more environmental service workers who are able to pick up our trash and recycling instead of being off on compensation.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 241, please say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cornell. Bill 256.
Bill 256, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code Title II Fiscal, Article IX, Property Taxes by Creating a New Chapter 268, Real Estate Tax Exemptions for Construction or Adaptive Reuse of Buildings in Downtown Pittsburgh.
Motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
A motion and a second to hold two weeks. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Yeah, fairly long discussion. I just wanted to say quickly that I think in the announcements today, you'll see that we're with all members to have a briefing later today so that we can fully discuss this, and, you know, what's at stake here is 25% of our real estate tax base, and looking forward to a robust discussion and full access to everyone who's been a partner to help downtown, and just want to make sure that happens. So looking forward to the discussion. Thanks, everyone.
Any further discussion at this moment? Seeing none, all those in favor of a two-week hold for Bill 256, please say aye.
Aye.
We will hold the bill for two weeks. Bill 258.
Bill 258, Resolution Providing for the Creation of the Mobility Enhancement District Trust Fund and Setting Conditions for the Deposit and Expenditure of Such Funds. This fund is the exclusive use of funding mobility enhancements within the mobility enhancement district as defined in Section 550.02 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? No discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Thank you. We move on to invoices. We have a motion to approve invoices?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of invoices, please say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, invoices are approved. Interdepartmental transfers? We do not have any interdepartmental transfers. P-card, do we have a motion to approve P-card?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of P-cards, please say aye.
Aye.
P-cards are approved. Moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilperson Warwick.
Bill 242, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement with the National Association of City Transportation Officials, Inc., to provide membership dues from January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2024, not to exceed $33,125.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill 245.
Bill 245, Resolution Granting Unto 2700 Penn Avenue Partners LLC, Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense at No Cost to the City, Two Cantilevered Upper Level Floor Plates That Will Extend Into the Right-of-Way at 2700 Penn Avenue, 6th Ward, 1st Council District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill 246.
Bill 246, Resolution Authorizing Acceptance by the City of Pittsburgh, the Dedication of Two Portions of East Liberty Boulevard, 125A52, at No Cost to the City, 12th Ward, 9th Council District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Bill 247, and we have a request to read Bill 247 together with Bill 240 in a separate committee, the Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee, please.
Bill 247, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Local Shares Account for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in the Amount of $500,000 to Purchase Vehicles and Equipment That Will Be Used to Support Domi's Bridge Maintenance Efforts. And Bill 240, Resolution Authorizing a Cooperation Agreement or Agreement Providing for the Transfer of Funds Not to Exceed $500,000 to the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the Purchase of Bridge Maintenance Vehicles for Use by the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. This expenditure is associated with grant funds that the city will receive from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Local Share Account Program.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bills 247 and 240, please say aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Bill 248, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of City Planning to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Local Share Account Statewide to Provide Funding for a Voluntary Buyout Program in a Sawmill Run Watershed. The Grant Proposal Includes An Ask of $1 Million for This Stated Purpose.
Motion to approve.
Brief discussion, please.
We have a second, brief discussion, Councilman Coghill?
Yes, I'd like to bring Marty up if I could. This is about...
You gave a second? There was a second?
Yeah, I don't think we had a second.
A second.
Was there a second?
I don't think there was.
Okay. So now there's a second.
Come on, Marty.
Discussion, Councilman Coghill. Thank you.
Right to the discussion.
Yvonne, I'm Marty Bass, Stone Environmental Planner in the City's Department of City Planning.
Hello, Marty. Thank you for being here. I just want to, I guess, departmentalize what this money is for, right? So many years ago, I put in for buyouts on Sawmill Run Boulevard, which you are well aware of, flood zone. So this money today is for actual buyouts, right? A million dollars?
Yeah, so I can give a little context, and I think it's important that everyone be aware of the work that this would build upon. We are currently in the process of receiving bids for a different FEMA grant that would look at creating a voluntary buyout program for the city. It's something that Domi staff and other groups across the city have voiced would be very helpful to them. So that work will begin once we are under contract with a consultant, and based on all of the technical analysis and protocols established through that work, we would then utilize this grant fund if we received it to do some of the buyouts of the most at-risk properties.
Right, so we need a plan first in order to spend this money. The plan is going to cost us money, right?
It's, the planning is all through a FEMA BRIC grant, which is one of the only funding sources that doesn't require a declaration of disaster. It's looking at doing more proactive mitigation, and so the only match is in-kind.
Great, that's wonderful. So this money is not guaranteed, this million dollars is of yet?
Yes, this is just, we did submit the grant application for this, and this is just to...
Yeah, we're confident, though, that we're going to secure it.
Sure.
Yeah, and so the plan will quickly follow, the funding or, you know, the, did you apply for that money yet, or did you put in for that grant?
So we have the money to do the creation of the program and identifying the most vulnerable properties, and so this grant that is at Standing Committee today would build upon that in 2025 ideally. And so we have the initial funding, and then this was just money to actually do the buyouts, because we currently don't have any funding to do any...
Exactly, right, right. I can't tell you how welcome this was to me. Now, we've been lucky over the past three or four years, you know, we haven't had dumpsters floating down Route 51, but as we saw, you know, we're kind of at the behest of Mother Nature there. If we're able to buy out, let's use Provost Road, there's about 16 or 18 homes there, not only will we buy them out, we'll help them try to secure funding towards another place, because the property values are in the tank, right? Maybe $42,000 or so per property, mainly because they're in a flood zone. So they can't really, even if we were to offer fair market value, it's hard for them to find a place to go or to live. So we would probably focus on this area, and this area, so you all know is, sorry about that.
You're excited.
This area is like, we could create a holding tank, a swell, thank you there, officer, for that water and release it slowly. So this particular area could solve the major problem that we have, because everything downstream floods, and if we could have a swell or, what do we, what do we call that?
Yeah, floodplain restoration.
Floodplain restoration, right.
That's the goal, is we would identify the properties to remove risk as well as then do the work of actually doing floodplain restoration to minimize the flooding that happened.
Right, and that goes all the way in the district, too. I mean, you know, the whole Route 51 corridor. Hey, Marty, thanks so much. You know, anything you want to add?
No, just, once we are starting the current work of creating that voluntary buyout, we definitely will be looking to have interviews with all of you and thinking about how landslides and flooding have affected your districts and what you would like to see for a city protocol and a city program.
But this particular million dollars is designated for Route 51?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, don't worry.
You made me nervous there. Because they all have landslides and stuff, you know, so...
Yeah, we've identified Sawmill Run as a place that we know has risk and that we would be looking basically to pilot this program.
Yeah, so this million dollars will hopefully come in timeframe?
2025 ideally.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the plan will be done ahead of time so we could accept that million dollars.
Yeah.
Very good, very good. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Kelsmith is here. I don't know if she might have a question, you know, because it does relate to her as well. This is about the floodplain on Route 51.
Oh, yeah, no, we already met.
Okay, good.
Thank you for joining the meeting.
That's it for me, Marty. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Any further discussion?
I think he wanted me to say, I said at the meeting, "If he's okay, I'm okay."
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of Bill 248, please say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross.
Bill 237, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Department of City of Pittsburgh. of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with C D W Government LLC for a voiceover Internet Protocol Unified Communications Platform to implement convergence of systems to support citywide communications at a cost not to exceed two million, one hundred thousand dollars over three years.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Discussion, Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Just was there an RFP? That's all I want to know. Yes? Okay, that's all I needed to know. Yes, there was. Okay.
Very good. So the question was, was there an RFP? The answer was yes, from the department. And any further discussion?
Nope.
Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation. Bill two thirty-eight.
Bill two thirty-eight, resolution amending Resolution eight forty-three of two thousand and twenty-three, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Atlantis IT Consulting Group LLC as needed for an enterprise-wide warehouse supply and inventory management solution by increasing the approved amount by five hundred and forty thousand dollars for an amended total cost not to exceed seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars over three years.
Motion to approve?
Second. Discussion?
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, Councilman Wilson?
Yes. Is there someone here that can speak to the bill?
Good morning. I'm Gwendolyn Moore, Assistant Director, Business, Technology, Innovation and Performance.
Good morning. Shereen Abdul Sami, Senior Manager of Applications.
Thanks. I had a question about the half million dollars. Is this an ongoing program or is this a new program?
This is new.
New. Can you explain the program?
Right now, the different departments are using paper, Excel spreadsheets, and other documents to assess and develop their warehouse inventory. And we wanted to develop a application that would automate that process and integrate with Cartograph, which is our asset management system. So that's what this will do. It'll be automated process for entering all the warehouse, entering all the materials, tracking the materials, and then automatically uploading the materials as needed into the Cartograph system for the, you know, filling potholes or supplying parks with different types of accessories and what have you. So it's automating a process that's currently manual.
Hmm. Interesting. So, because I'm just trying to understand what all is in the inventory that we would need to put into the, into a digital system?
So for instance, D P W warehouse out in the East End has hundreds of the mops and any type of inventory that you could think of. They need to be able to have that automated process when the supplies come in. They can put it into the system. They would use barcoding to take it out of the system, and then Cartograph would let them know when they would need those different types of supplies. Right now, it's all paper, emails, Excel spreadsheets, telephone calls. It's very time-consuming, and you're not able to have an accurate count of items because it's not automatically deducted from the system. This would automate all those processes. And it's multiple departments who will be using it.
Yeah. So when I think of Equipment Leasing Authority, I think of like trucks and...
This is not, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, perhaps you misunderstood. This is not leasing equipment. This is actual material.
No, I don't misunderstand that. It says to the city of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority.
I'm sorry, maybe it's...
Oh, wait, am I on the wrong?
No.
Oh, yeah, yeah, two thirty-eight.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Quickly glanced down, was it the wrong bill?
I'm sorry.
But listening to the, listening to the bill, thanks for going over that.
Sure.
So it's interesting that it's a new program, but this, so now like D P W will have like a barcode scanner? So were there always barcodes on items that came in or?
There might have been barcodes on there, but they might have scanned them, but they actually manually input the numbers. Now it's going to go into a software application that's going to have all of that automated.
Okay. So, yeah, okay. So just like when a box come in, just like anyone's buy something has those numbers on the box, and those now will be scannable, or they are scannable, so now they will be put into a system. So this will be buying actual, not just the software, but the actual scanners?
I don't think the equipment is included in this particular application. That's a separate purchase.
So we're going to have a separate bill that comes over with?
I would imagine what, the reason why I M P is working on this is because it's multiple departments who are using the software. I'm not sure what physical material each individual department uses to enter the barcodes, but I would assume they have those already.
I want to note that, excuse me, I'm sorry, but that I M P Director Heidi Norman has joined and also has her hand up. I don't know if that's because she wants to answer the question that was just asked.
I believe the question was answered. Thank you so much, Heidi Norman, Director of I M P. You know, effectively what this does is take an integrated manual process from all of the warehouses in the city and allows them to automate using a new software platform, replacing the paper, Excel spreadsheets, and manual processing for those thousands of items. Those items could be in the D P W warehouse, in the Fire Bureau's warehouse, and others. And it can be anything, as Assistant Director Moore said, it can be anything from shovels to, you know, various kinds of oxygen containers, to the masks that firemen would wear to an emergency. It's just, there's so many different items. And if you try to imagine any logistics company managing their supply chain, you know, people are familiar with Amazon. If Amazon was trying to manage their warehouse and bring items in and ship items out to the correct places, and beyond the scanning of the code, barcode, then that all had to be entered manually onto a spreadsheet using email and phone calls rather than a software system that can track all of those items individually and upload the assets to be integrated with our asset management system, Cartograph. It brings into perspective exactly what our terrific frontline workers have been going through. And this is, so this will modernize all of that and make it much simpler for them to be able to manage those critical supply chains to get needed goods to our frontline workers. Thank you.
All right, thanks. So for clarity, if there's a piece of equipment, like a fire extinguisher at a firehouse, we want to know how many there are at Engine thirty-two. Would we, right now, we will call up, like say the chief wants to know, like whoever's in charge of operations for the fire, they would call up and say, you know, they would want to know how many units there are, and then they would tell them that they have a, like a paper sheet or maybe they have a computer at the, you know, at the building, and they would just report back, like that's how they report back on what's in the inventory now?
As far as I know, I'm not sure about their actual processes, but I do know they use Excel spreadsheets and phone calls. We're actually coordinating the process for the, whenever there's more than two departments who use a particular application, I M P administers that process. So we help them with the RFP. We help them with the decision-making, but we don't actually use the software ourselves. We just maintain the software for them. So I'm not familiar with their day-to-day processes, but I do know they were manual. I would assume it was something. Do you know anything else about that, Shereen? We would have to check with them to understand what their exact manual processes.
Yeah, I understand this is a department-specific question, but I just wanted to get a little more understanding of what we're spending here. So thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I have Councilperson Warwick followed by Councilwoman Gross.
I was just curious if there's maybe, perhaps not this time around, but future-looking, if this would also, so in addition to automating the warehouse management, right, would that also feed into the procurement system, the ordering, so that like if there's parts that we use all the time, we can make sure that those are being restocked proactively so that, you know, we have the parts when we need them and we don't have more parts than we need?
I'm not sure. I think, Shereen, do you need to speak with them?
That would be with the future procurement systems, not with the current one.
It's not with the current one. So, yeah, I mean, just to clarify, yeah.
Yeah, this contract would not be with the current one.
But just to, so that, you know, systems like this, like that's sort of where, you know, you really, it's like you have to do it piecemeal, but that is how you ultimately automate your, you know, you have to do it.
I'm not sure, but I do think that the Cartograph system, since it is an asset management system, if it integrates with Cartograph, Cartograph, for instance, would know that you would need ten tons of tar for something or ten pumps for swimming pools. And if the Atlantis system says there's only nine, and then we needed ten, I would imagine that Cartograph could let them know because those systems will be integrated. That's why we wanted something that was integrated with the asset management systems that we could have those type of capabilities.
They can actually send a notification.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Senator. So I often, over the last ten years, questioned the millions and millions of dollars we've spent on some technology solutions and questioned if there were two.
I do not question this one. My older sister got a bachelor's in business in college, and in the nineteen eighties went to work at an oil refinery where there's a giant warehouse, as you can imagine, full of nuts and bolts and widgets and screws and all kinds of things I don't even, can't name. And there was no inventory system. And she built one on like early Microsoft Access.
Wow.
Yeah, with the barcodes in the sheets, relational database. So trained all the people in the, you know, the factory, in the actual, you know, safety suits who were working in the warehouse and at the refinery in order to do this exact inventory management. And that was in the nineteen eighties. So we're forty years behind, right, working on spreadsheets. You've worked on spreadsheets. You know how easy it is to just delete a line or make a mistake when you're trying to duplicate over to something else. So I think this is a really great investment, and it's a little embarrassing that we're just getting around to it. So thank you all for leading the change. And I think that we will find that instead of things having to be reordered because we didn't know we had it, just kind of like in your own home, or maybe in your own digital files, you don't know that you have something, we'll know that we have it and we won't have to order it again. Or we'll know that we're low on it and we'll have more, we won't have delays in either construction or in Parks and Rec because we're waiting on something. So I'm very happy to vote yes today. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I did just have one question. I mean, we talked a lot about D P W. There were mentions of other departments being able to use this. Parks and Rec will be included here, all of our?
Finance, the mailroom for finance.
Everything. Okay.
The only one that didn't continue with the process is EMS, and that's because we couldn't do the dispensers for their inventory. But any other department that wants to join will be able to join in the future.
Seeing no further questions or no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice day.
That moves us on to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley.
Bill two thirty-nine, resolution amending Resolution fifteen of two thousand and twenty-four, which authorized a cooperation agreement or agreements with the city of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment and accessories, equipment support infrastructure, and professional services in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four by increasing the amount by one million, three hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred and two dollars to a new total of thirteen million, nine hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars to account for funds omitted from the original resolution.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. We already voted on Bill two forty, so that moves us, that brings us to the end of our agenda. We have some meeting announcements this afternoon. With sessions at one P M. and two P M., Council will hold a briefing to discuss downtown tax abatements. To manage each session and to prevent a quorum, please confirm attendance with the city clerk's office. Also this afternoon, Council will hold an executive session on Bills, on Bills two seventeen to two twenty and two seventy at one thirty P M. This will be in-person only. These cover our legal warrants. Council will hold both irregular and standing committee meetings on Monday, March twenty-fifth at ten A M. and one thirty P M., respectively. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the Council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one three eight. On Tuesday, March twenty-sixth at two P M., Council will hold a public hearing on Bill one sixty-nine as it relates to the historic designation for Sal's Barber Shop. Can I please have a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.